Good evening, I'd like to call the order this business meeting of the Tacoma School District Board of Directors Thursday, February 27th, 2020. Would you all please rise for the flag salute?
........................
General Counsel, would you please call the roll?
President Heinz.
Here.
Vice President Cobb.
Director Baumright.
Here.
Director Keating.
Here.
And is Director Leon excused?
Uh, he is. He, um, he's excused for now and he may be here for the latter part of the meeting.
Great, and we have a quorum.
Right, thank you. Item number four, adoption of the agenda, is there a motion to approve?
I see a second.
Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries four zero. Item number five, recognition of staff, students, and community, 5.1, recognition of Gold Star Community Partner Award to Rich Brown, Major Taylor Project Cascade Bicycle Club.
Good evening, Superintendent Santorno, Deputy Superintendent Garcia, President Heinz, and directors. Um, my name is Amanda Scott Thomas, I'm the Director of the Community Partnership Office, and it's my, uh, pleasure and honor to present, um, February's Gold Star Community Partner Award. As you all know, Tacoma Public Schools defines partnership as a cooperative relationship between students, families, schools, the school district, and the greater Tacoma community. Partners are committed to stu-, uh, to supporting student academic success and success of the whole child. Partners work and, work with and invest in the education of our children and youth whose future in turn will affect the quality of life in the, in the entire Tacoma community. When it comes to student success, Tacoma Public Schools recognizes that schools cannot do it alone, and in recognition of an investment of time, talent, and resources for TPS students, families, and staff, the Gold Star Community Partner Award signifies honor and thanks to a community partner who has made a difference by doing what's best for kids. Um, for tonight, um, February, last, uh, day of February, Black History Month, it's an honor to, um, talk about and recognize, um, the, uh, this, uh, particular community-based organization and partner. Uh, more than a hundred years ago, one of the most popular spectator sports in the world was bicycle racing. And one of the most popular racers was a squat-strapping man named Major Taylor. He set records in his teens and was a world champion at the age of twenty. He traveled the globe, racing as far away as Australia, and amassed wealth amongst the greatest of any athlete of his time. Thousands of people flocked to see him, newspapers fawned over him, Major Taylor was called the "Black Cyclone", and at once, he was the LeBron James and Jackie Robinson of his time. He blew past racial barriers in an overwhelmingly white field bent on stopping him, sometimes violently. He was the first African-American world champion in cycling and the second black athlete to win a world championship in any sport. The Major Taylor Project, MTP, empowers youth through, through bicyc-, bicycling. In an after-school bicycling clubs, MTP, uh, their students explore their communities, they build confidence, and discover their power to affect change. During the summer months, many MTP students go further than they thought was even possible, testing their skills, experience, and perseverance by biking two-hundred-and-six miles from Seattle to Portland annually. MTP provides weekly bike rides after school, um, so students can explore their community, they deliver bicycles and safety and maintenance education to middle and high school-age youth, they provide opportunities to elevate youth's voice and inspire students to advocate for change in their community, and expose students to various cycling disciplines, including touring, urban riding, track racing, mountain biking, and cyclo-racing. Currently, Major Taylor Bicycle Clubs are hosted at Mount Oklahoma, Foss High School, as well as Jason Lee Middle School. MTP, MTP manager, Rich Brown, leads, hopes, or he, uh, leads and he hopes to expand the program, offering it into, into Tacoma. And in his words, he says, "Knowing that every day, we, the MTP team and Cascade, have an opportunity to change the lives of our students, it brings me hope that the youth we work with will be young leaders and advocates for changes in our society." Can you welcome with me, Mr. Rich Brown?
Thank you, um, yeah, this is quite the honor, um, and on behalf of Cascade Bicycle Club and the Major Taylor Project, I'd like to accept this award. Um, and I also like to thank, um, some of the key players that helped this happen in Tacoma. Um, one of which is Christine Brant, uh, Jason Lee Middle School. James Neal. Amanda Scott Thomas. And last but not least, um, one of our, um, supporters with our adaptive programming, um, Dave Cook at Foss High School, who's, who has enabled us to provide, um, cycling to those that don't have the resources or have special needs. Dave Cook has helped us, um, guide, um, two to three students on our ST, on portions of the Seattle-to-Portland ride. So I'd like to honor Dave Cook as well. Thank you so much.
Mr. Brown, would you please come up so we can thank you? Item 5.2, recognition of Jason Lee Middle School for revalidation of its status as an Avid Demonstration School through 2023.
Good evening, President Heinz and members of the board. Avid is an international nonprofit college readiness program designed to help students develop the skills they need to be successful in college. The program places special emphasis on writing, critical thinking, teamwork, organization, and reading skills. In 2018, the International Avid Center completed a rigorous evaluation of Jason Lee Middle School's implementation of the Avid approach. And based on the staff's level of commitment and expertise in the students' results, Jason Lee was named an Avid National Demonstration School. Those demonstration schools host visitors who want to see it in action and learn how to use Avid strategies to help them launch their own Avid-based programs. Today, Avid serves about four-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand students in more than forty-eight-hundred schools around the world. Yet, only a hundred-and-fifty schools are demonstration schools, and that status doesn't last forever. Recently, Jason Lee and its school team went through a rigorous reevaluation process to determine if they continue to adhere to the Avid practices with fidelity. And I'm pleased to announce and honor Jason Lee Middle School for approval of its revalidation as an Avid Demonstration School through 2023. And please welcome, Avid Coordinator Crystal Keller, Principal Christine Brant, and the Jason Lee team.
Good evening. Esteemed members and school board and guests, my name is Crystal Keller, like Dan said, I'm the Avid Site Coordinator at Jason Lee. At Jason Lee, we believe in empowered students. To do this, Jason Lee strives to make our students academically, socially, emotionally, and physically whole. Our students will be prepared for college and career through Jason Lee's commitments to Avid, restorative justice, and human rights. The implementation of, uh, the implementation and rigor of Avid at Jason Lee is a pivotal factor in building the academic success which prepares our students for high school and post-secondary. It is through the dedication of our students and the school district's continual support that our students continue to thrive and grow into the future leaders of our community. Tonight, in attendance with Principal Brant and myself, we have two extraordinary Avid elective teachers, Mike McDonald and Ryan Whitlock. Both these individuals exemplify Avid at its highest implementation, and without them, our national demonstration status wouldn't have happened. So thank you so much, Ryan and Mike. I'd like to present Mike McDonald, our Avid elective teacher.
Good evening. I am Michael McDonald, a math and Avid teacher at Jason Lee. We at Jason Lee Middle School appreciate being recognized as a national demonstration school. Tacoma Public Schools aims to eliminate disparities among all groups, while Avid's mission is to close the achievement gap by preparing all students for college readiness and success in a global society. Avid is a system in which provides our students from underrepresented demographics a platform to thrive through its rigorous and inquiry-based strategies. This system transcends throughout all content areas at Jason Lee Middle School. I've seen firsthand the power of what consistency can to, can do to a budding middle schooler's mind and physical being. Students are learning how to learn, and I am honored to be teaching these wonderfully resilient children, and thank you to Tacoma Public Schools for its continued efforts in reaching all students. Uh, I would now like to introduce four of our eighth-grade Avid elective students, Dylan Wiggins, Jevon Dickinson, Malia Kio Barbie, and, uh, McAlain Lamb. Thank you.
Hello. Hello. Hello, my name is Dylan, and, uh, yeah, I have this, I wrote, I wrote something, I'm gonna read it off of this, uh, yeah. Jason Lee Avid is amazing, from Cornell notes to tutorials, ten-twenty-four-seven, and everything in between. Avid has personally helped me, helped me with my organization and note-taking skills. At Jason Lee, it is our goal to use the Avid learning methods in every class. When you walk into a Jason Lee Avid classroom, you will get the feeling that it is a healthy learning environment, getting kids ready for college, and set goals for our future. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Malia. Avid has helped me as a student by preparing me for fut-, the future, like, high school and even better, college. Avid has so many strategies that can help you stay organized. For example, ten-twenty-four-seven is always very helpful because it helps you refer back to your notes and better your knowledge. Ten minutes after you've written your notes, you highlight. Twenty-four hours later, you write conscious questions your notes have the answer to. And seven days after, you write a summary, summary reflecting off your knowledge. Another strategy is backwards planning, and that's one of my favorites. Because knowing me, I personally forget upcoming events, so I forget to prepare. And when I've backwards planned, I've already have it written down, so I'm ready to go. And Avid isn't even all about education. Avid helps you advance in your confidence and you're able to be comfortable with any audience around you, for example, right now. And those are so many reasons why Jason Lee is a National Avid Demonstration School. Thank you.
Great job, you guys.
Item 5.3, recognition of the district's newest National Board Certified Teachers and recently renewed National Board Certified Teachers.
Thank you, President Heinz and members of the board, we have another good one for you tonight. Um, it's my pleasure to kick off a recognition for a number of our high-quality teachers who have worked diligently to improve their craft by earning or renewing their National Board Certification. You will see in the images on the screens here in the boardroom tonight, um, information about these teachers as they're being presented with their recognition. To tell you more about this rigorous program of excellence and introduce our Board Certified Teachers, please welcome from Teaching and Learning Assistant Superintendent Marie Verhar.
Good evening. This is always one of our most special and cherished evenings. National Board Certification is nationally recognized and an advanced teaching credential. It complements but does not replace a state teacher's license. Educators voluntarily elect to pursue National Board Certification, and this rigorous process can take up to three years to successfully complete and certify. National Board Certification is built upon the National Board Standards and the five core propositions, which include: Teachers are committed to students and their learning, teachers know the subjects they teach and how to teach them, teachers are responsible for managing and monitoring students and their learning, teachers think systematically about their practice and learn from experience, and teachers are members of learning communities. The process to certify is performance-based and evaluated using multiple measures. Tacoma Public Schools, through the Curriculum and Instruction Office, provides ongoing support for initial National Board candidates and renewal candidates by providing cohort support, support at no cost to our candidates. In Tacoma Public Schools, eleven-point-six percent of our TEA staff are nationally board-certified. This year, we have the honor of welcoming sixteen newly-certified teachers, and tonight, we have the privilege of recognizing eleven of these educators who are able to join us tonight. Thank you for your undertaking, for the process to grow in your practice and through this challenging process. In addition to recognizing newly-certified NBCTs this evening, we're also honoring our renewal candidates. These renewal candidates began the renewal process during their eighth or ninth years of their NBCTs. This year, we had twenty teachers elect to renew their National Board Certification, and we have seven of them with us tonight. Thank you to all of you for your continued commitment and growing as professionals. Both our new and renewed board-certified teachers have demonstrated a relentless commitment to continuous improvement in order to advance student learning. It is an honor to recognize our new and renewed NBCTs tonight. As your names are called, please come up, make a line around, and once we've had everyone called, names called, we'd like to invite them up onto the dais to shake the hands of our board, and then we'd love to have a picture as well. And tonight, I have with me Katie Taylor, Instructional Facilitator from Curriculum and Instruction, who's going to assist me with moving the pictures, as we call the names of these incredible educators. First, we have Jessie Dobson. Lorraine Emerson. Isla Evans. Amanda Fox. Sean Fullerton. Jennifer Grisham. Gillian Gutierrez. Kaitlin Jorgensen. Susan Clouda. Lauren Samball. Margaret Walter. This next group are the, the renewal candidates who have renewed after eight to nine years. Kara Best. Jen Brown. Jean Henry. John Heinz. Cynthia was unable to attend as she's ill tonight. Brian Johnson. Claudine Thompson. Katie's going to flip through and share, share with you the educators who are not able to join us tonight, because we equally want to recognize them for their incredible, incredible work. Also, we want to thank family members who are in the audience tonight, because we know this process takes support at home. And we recognize that, and we want to thank all of our family members who are here tonight, supporting their National Board Certified Teachers, and for all of the support they gave them throughout the process.
All right, we'll give our wonderful nationally certified and recertified teachers a minute to exit. All right, we'll move on to Agenda Item Number Six, Superintendent's Report. Item 6.1, Career and Technical Education Annual Report. Superintendent.
I'm sorry. So, we're gonna ask John Page to come up, he gives, annually gives us a CTE report, thank you, John.
Okay, good evening, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board, and Superintendent and Deputy Superintendent. Uh, what a blessing for me to be able to serve as the Director for Career and Technical Education, and I really feel honored to have a few minutes with you tonight, share some of our successes and our plans. And I'm hoping that this clicker's gonna work just fine for us tonight. And so really, each year, I come to you and share just a little bit of the excerpts of our five-year plan for Career and Technical Education, and then the Carl Perkins Grant, this year, it's Carl Perkins Five, it's, we're in a transition year from Carl Perkins Four. Uh, it's a grant that's administered at the United States Department of Education, and it's a grant that is a non-competitive grant. It's, uh, it is formula-structured based on the K-12 population of the district. Okay, um, so a little bit of our alignment with the district's strategic plan goals, we're really focused on the academic excellence, partnerships, and safety, and I hope that our slides set tonight illustrate some of those pieces. And of course, our priority benchmark is industry-recognized certifications, with an ultimate goal that each Tacoma graduate will leave here with one or more industry-recognized certifications. Um, this, uh, the district-wide plan and the Carl Perkins, uh, grant application has been reviewed by our General Advisory Board, which is composed of members from business and industry, our community, and some of our, uh, team members from Career and Technical Education. So they're recommending approval of district-wide plan and, uh, Perkins application. Okay, so there's some frequently asked questions in CTE, I thought that might be of interest to the, the board and, uh, members in the community. Um, basically, on any given day at the high school level, about sixty percent of our high school students are enrolled in one or more CT classes. So we do have a pretty large impact and footprint on our students. Uh, high school requires one, uh, credit of CTE for graduation, but many of our students take four electives and even sometimes more. Because of our different programs and expanding learning, our kids have more room in their schedule to take classes of their choice, whether they're advanced placement, or if they're in CTE, or whatever their endeavors are. Common certifications, it's, uh, the Food and Hacks Program is really popular, because we have culinary arts, all five of our, uh, Conference of High Schools, as well as Oakland High School, the Microsoft IT Academy is- The Microsoft IT academies have been really popular certifications. OSHA-10, which is basic industrial safety. We have a list of over a hundred certifications that students can earn in their time here in Tacoma. What makes us unique is all of our teachers are tasked with having student leadership clubs. They range from DECA, some of you've heard of DECA for Business and Marketing, to Pro Start Culinary, to locally developed clubs for Computer Science, Automotive Technology. It's pretty far-ranging, and we do a lot of project-based learning, career readiness. I have spoken to you before about registered apprenticeships, and last year, we had three programs that were approved. We're one of the few districts in the state of Washington. We have a registered apprenticeship for production cabinet assembler, for automotive technician, service technician, and also for prep cook. We will have a completer that will journey out this year, this summer. He's a senior at Mount Toma High School, and I'll probably bring him back to the podium later this year. Okay? And I think with something else about registered apprenticeship, I'd want you to know, is that it's two thousand hours of paid work experience in their junior and senior year, and a hundred and forty-four hours of instruction, which is called related supplemental instruction. And so, you figure that a kid with two thousand hours is going to earn about twenty-seven thousand dollars through their junior and senior year while going to school and earning college credit. Okay? And where we're headed, under your leadership, your challenge is for innovative programs, for the innovative certifications, and our partnerships with businesses in our community. Okay, so, the district-wide plan really has six components to it, and I'll show these through slides, but the IRCs, industry-recognized certificates, the in-demand pathways that we're focusing on, our career guidance program for High School Beyond Plan, expanded learning opportunities, professional development, and technology upgrades. Those are the six components that we, we put together about a nine-page district-wide plan, and how we're going to achieve those. Pretty hard to see this slide, but for people that are looking at the public front of the district's benchmarks, under academic excellence, you'd find a benchmark for student attainment of industry-recognized certifications. I think that number for last year is about thirty-nine point one percent of our seniors left here. Thinking in mind that when we started this journey in IRCs, we've learned a lot in the journey. The first year we did it, we had one point six percent. So, the, the direction, the needle is moving in the right direction. Something you may not know is Oakland High School, last year was our first high school that had a hundred percent of their seniors leave here with one or more industry-recognized certifications. Fos High School last year had eighty-eight percent. So, we're moving the needle, we're turning every stone, and the culture has really shifted a lot. I want to thank the board again for that challenge to us. For, there's so many different pathways, there's so many different ways kids can find their success in life, whether it's through a university track, a two-year technical college trade program, military. But there's four that we tend to focus on for the newer opportunities, that's Computer Sciences, which we offer advanced placement Computer Sciences at several of our high schools. Healthcare Careers Academy, you're aware that we started that stadium high school in Mount Toma High School. Skilled Technical Trades range from welding fabrication. We have the Ajax Production Technician, it's a machining youth apprenticeship, it's headquartered at Lincoln High School, and then Environmental Services. Some of these programs outgoing to a lot of detail. We have summer programs with partnerships. For example, and the Environmental Services, we're partnered last year with the City of Tacoma with that program. I'll talk a little bit more about some of our other partnerships in a future slide. Comprehensive Career Guidance, the High School Beyond Plan is a graduation requirement. It begins in seventh grade, concludes in twelfth grade. Some of the newer pieces of that is something we're already doing in Tacoma, we've done for a long time, ensuring that kids that are eligible for college-bound scholars to complete their application before June thirtieth of the eighth-grade year, and so that makes them eligible for a scholarship upon graduation. Some of the newer pieces ensure that kids are exposed to FAFSA, the free application for financial aid. So, we're beefing up our efforts there for access to it. So, there's a few, a few small shifts in it. Career Cruising remains to be our electronic portfolio platform, so students can access it here at school or at home. Okay? Okay. Expanded learning opportunities, we just keep the, keep adding to the portfolio in CTE, believing that all kids can learn, and all kids can learn beyond the school day, and pursue some of the activities that they may not have access to during the school day. And so, each of our CTE teachers is expected to have a, some type of leadership club, and that's the expectation of OSPI, our state agency. And then, the next move, internship, has continued to grow with their unpaid internships, where students can go in and shadow, and network with a variety of business partners across the district. Cooperative work experience is paid in, it's paid experience, happens typically after school and throughout summer. And then, we started a Wildland Fire Certification Program last summer. We're actually going to offer it during spring break this year, because it's really directed for seniors to get them a last certification, get them ready for a entry-level employment opportunity, should they choose to go that route. The extended summer, you know, this is year seven, you know, year eight of Summer Jobs Two Five Three, and I think it's, it is important for, for my generation, as well as others, that our kids do want to work, and we have that evidence each year. This year, we had seventy-five slots available to support Summer Jobs Two Five Three, a partnership with the City of Tacoma. We had over four hundred and fifty applications for those seventy-five slots. So, this generation does want to work, and we need to keep networking them with businesses. And so, what we've come out of that, if you drop down to the extended year, without going into detail, each of them, I will call your attention to what's called Careers Connect. It's down towards the bottom, it says it's new. And Careers Connect means that these are kids that are not in Summer Jobs Two Five Three, but we're going to support them in the summer during their work. These kids typically want to work more than, than the ninety-six hours of Summer Jobs Two Five Three, so we're finding a way to support them through the summer and make credit attainment accessible for them. Okay? You see two other new red ones up there, the Electricians Interim credential, that's our local IBW. It's pretty cool, it's an online delivery program. Students complete the modules, it counts for their first hundred and forty-four hours, should a platform be selected into the apprenticeship program after graduation. So, it's articulated with the IBW. And the other one up there is, there's another red one. We started the Drone FAA One Oh Seven Certification Program last year at Oakland. We're expanding that out into a summer program, so kids around the district have access to it. It's about a two-week program, it's a, it's a federally recognized license, pilot's license. Okay, what else we got going on here? Professional development, we kind of stay with the same program. Each year, CTE is what's unique about CTE, is we're on a five-year rotation. Each of our classes, the curriculums are reviewed and updated each five years. Student Leadership, we talked a little bit about, IRCs, a little bit. Incident Prevention Program, we provide professional development on it. That is, some people would call that, you know, an accident prevention program, it's your safety program, really, for how you're maintaining your facilities, and the lessons that kids are going to learn that are related to industry. And then, the CTE Advisory Committees, we have a general advisory committee that we meet four times a year, and eighteen specific pathway advisory committees that represent anything from business and marketing, to welding, to machining, to construction trades. Okay? So, that's how we involve the community. A little bit on technology upgrades, we're just about done with our Windows upgrades, and we've aligned with the District of Tech Department on this. Our challenge right now is we have some really, we run in CTE some of the higher-end programs of AutoCAD, that's, you know, presented some new challenges for us, but we're just about there. We've aligned with the district's summer upgrades deployments, so Wilson High School and Jason Lee Middle School will be getting new CTE hardware this summer. Comprehensive, I think this is my last slide to share tonight, and what's new this year in, in the Perkins Grant, and I believe later in your agenda, the Perkins Grant is going to appear for your approval. What's really new is the comprehensive local needs assessment, and the real, the whole backdrop to that is engaging the stakeholders that have historically been underrepresented in our programs, and to disen, and to engage the disenfranchised populations that have not been fully involved in our programs. So, what we're doing right now is we've expanded our general advisory committee. We are in the process of writing, it's an electronic survey, and we're reaching out, talking in the community, and targeting certain populations or stakeholders that can advise us on really reviewing the survey, so we ask the right questions, and we ask them in the right ways, so that we get authentic and genuine input for our programs. I'd say that's the biggest piece of the Carl Perkins Five Grant this year. The rest, I think that we could read through, but there's pieces about student performance. We do have metrics that, we use the district's metrics to fulfill most of those requirements, anything from math scores to English language art scores, things of that nature. And there's pieces about recruitment and retention, training of the CTE educators. I think that's, I think that's about the short summary I get to give you, and I hope I didn't go over ten minutes, but I could talk all night about CTE.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments for Mr. Page? Director Keating.
I would just say, my daughter just got her food handler's card as a freshman, and she has been dying to work since she was about thirteen, so she's quite excited that she's just that much closer, you know, at fifteen and a half, to be able to get a job. And so, she was just really, I think it was like two weeks ago that she got, had that opportunity, so I just am grateful that that's something that's available to her and other students.
Congratulations, Mom.
Thanks.
Thank you for the feedback.
It doesn't mean she's cooking more at home, though. We're working on that.
Need to get her in the culinary arts program. Vice President Cobb.
Shout out to Chef at Stadium, we had one in that program, and that's all that he could talk about. But I have two threads of questions, one related to the last slide that you're on, around the comprehensive needs assessment. Do you have a sense for who is most underrepresented currently in our CTE programs, demographically? Or how do you think about?
I think that our demographics for CTE programs are pretty reflective of the students in our student population. I believe that our partners at the table, the business partners, may not be as reflective in the community as we'd like to get, get there, because that is a volunteer effort. So, you know, some of the history, I think that districts across the state, you have pockets of excellence. We have some extremely high-performing that are well-represented, and we have some areas that we need to target specifically, for, specifically for people of color, small business owners that are women. Okay? And if I say these words in the wrong fashion, I apologize, maybe I don't mean to offend anybody, but how we bring different people in. I think there's, there's pieces there about, just by having those people on our team will expand our base to, when we do our field trips, when we expand our partnerships, when we talk about students establishing their identity, not only in the world of work, but who they're going to connect with and network with, and really hear the real stories about the working world. So, that's, that's what we aim to do.
Thank you. And then, my other question was related to the slide where you had the data about, I think it's slide number four, it starts frequently asked questions. The bullet related to why is registered apprenticeships important, you mentioned the dollar amount, I think you said something like twenty-seven thousand? That's like real money. So, I'm curious about if you have any sense of, well, one, how are students paid? Is it typically direct deposits? And then, with that, do you have any sense of how, what percentage of students this has actually helped getting banked for the first time, too? Or are students coming with bank accounts, or that they're, that were already established? Or is this a mechanism, too, for students to get banked for the first time?
Okay. Thank you for that question. It's comprehensive, you got about three in there.
Sorry.
No, 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 let's see if I can break it down a little bit, though. These are real apprenticeships, they're registered with Labor and Industry of our state. Tacoma Public Schools is number twenty-one sixty-three, we have an official registry number. Our training agent, I'll use automotive technician for example, and our training agent is Titus Will Ford, which is the blue star gold chip of the auto service industry. So, that's a real paycheck that student gets. He submits the hours to us, we log those with LNI, so at the end, he does get a national-recognized certification. Okay? So, that paycheck, now, what he does with that money, how he saves it, I, I couldn't tell you what he does with that. I know he's a really responsible young person, and, you know, he's going to graduate from Mount Toma. He's communicated, he's staying out of Titus Will, and they, they love him there, and they're going to, they're already talking about their plans for where they're going to, you know, move him through more training. So, the answer about the paychecks as a structure, you know, it's different in my generation back in the old days, you actually got a pay stub, right? You got a paycheck, and you learn how to read it. You know, a lot of employers now, it's electronic deposit, or in, in some cases, it's, you know, it's a card, it's electronic card, so it's...
Well, just as a follow-up, I'm sure this is already on somebody's to-do plan list, but I just think that it's a great opportunity to get students who are in that position connected to financial literacy, and, you know, somebody's doing it, but just saying it, and like that coaching around savings, and two, I think it would be neat for us to keep track of, being banked is a big thing. So, if these, if engagement in Summer Jobs Two Five Three, or these apprenticeship programs is acting as a mechanism to do that, I think that's a significant win for us to keep track of, or to think about keeping track of, too.
If I may, on the Summer Jobs Two Five Three, I thank you for the time, I appreciate this. On Summer Jobs Two Five Three, there is a financial literacy component to that, that is part of the classroom structure, so that, Summer Jobs Two Five Three, the kids work ninety-six hours, and then you have twenty-four hours of classroom instruction, and that, that's been a part of the model since year one.
Thank you.
Financial literacy written down as well. Additional questions or comments? Director Leon.
Yeah, thanks. I think the Carl Perkins Grants is probably related more to getting more outside employers to help partner with us, is that?
Yeah, that's...
That's the goal of that. My question's more about how the need for underrepresented kids, you said they were pretty, we've got them from kind of all, all representations at this point, but I wonder if, if that's true for the foreign language-speaking or non-English-speaking families, because sometimes those are the families that don't take advantage of some of our programs. Are they doing okay with that, with taking advantage of this? That's one question.
I'm going to have to get back to the board on that, and I thank you for the question. I'm not prepared to answer that on English language learners. I know that we have them in our programs, but I'd want to dig deeper and give you a more comprehensive response.
Okay. And it may not be the student that's, the student doesn't speak English yet, they may have to go get a job, but I'm talking about the family, the student may be bilingual or trilingual, whatever it may be. And my other question was around the Next Move internship, how's that going? Is it growing? About roughly how many kids do we have in that? No, no exact numbers.
Definitely grown, definitely grown. I really commend the team Brady Becker and Alexa Folsom Hill, and there's a series of other teachers and staff, so they've really led the work. The adjust, the modifications, the updates they've done is they've developed a course called Pre-Internship, to make sure kids are ready before they go into it. It's got an online delivery model, so it is scaling out across the district. I would, I'm going to estimate, there's probably around four hundred kids that are being served across the district with it. It's one of those things that you just get these breakthroughs at different times, it's like, you know, you keep the work moving, and all of a sudden, you got some new, new hosts, new sponsors. Again, I commend the team there for their communications, where they're out in the community, they're, they're making the points of contact, then in that other part, to ensure that the sponsor, as well as the student, get a positive experience from it. You know, what they're doing on the front end, on the, the pre-internship conversation, that also helps, it also helps our Career Connect Program, okay? The kids are going in, into the work for paid internships as well.
Thank you. Student Representative Pearson.
I'm actually an intern for Next Move, for Sammy at least, and I believe Soden Idea, but I'm not positive. It's, what they're saying at least is, it's a graduation requirement to do the pre-internship at least, you don't need to complete the internship, but in pre-internship, there's like nine modules of financial literacy that everyone needs to complete, so you learn about like checking accounts versus mutual funds and savings and everything like that. Yeah.
That's good. Thank you for sharing. Any additional questions or comments? I had a couple. Dr. Garcia.
After you, please.
Well, first, I'd just like to come back to slide number six on the industry-recognized certifications, and just emphasize that that's forty percent of kids, not that have taken a CTE class, that are leaving with an industry-level certification. Like, let that sink in, that's pretty remarkable for a student to be walking out the door with that level of industry competency, and, you know, I think that there's an opportunity for us as a district, and I know you engage through the CTE committee, but I, I think we've done more of it with our federal legislative agenda, to really reinforce, we have students leaving school differently qualified now. And, and I appreciate the partnerships with organized labor, because I know when I looked at the data, the average apprenticeship was, age of apprenticeship was twenty-eight, and I think it's because you used to see people go out into the workforce and then come back as a second or third career and engage in the trades, and now we have students leaving high school. Heck, and I sat next to a young man a few weeks ago at Stadium who's doing the work, who's making the twenty-seven thousand dollars a year, so they're leaving high school differently qualified and prepared. So, I think there's a great opportunity for the board to work with the superintendent to really engage our local business community and let people know, hey, we've got these students coming out that are really ready to go, they're motivated, they're looking for employment, they have relevant skills. But that, to me, is remarkable, that in the eight years we've done this, we're at forty percent of our students leaving, so I appreciate that. that. It's a testament to your work and the superintendent's leadership. So thank you for your good work on that. A question, I know we do coding and students can earn CTE credit for coding. Can students earn language, a foreign language credit for coding?
For computer science coding, we, in the district at this time, we don't offer a world language credit for it. It, it is eligible for lab science credit and fourth-year math class.
Are there, so I'm channeling Senator Cantwell because I know she's, brings it up every time we see her. Is there, is that something she wants to make money available, which I think would be interesting? Is that something, is there something that I'm missing why we wouldn't be interested in exploring that opportunity of thinking about, you know, her point is coding is like a foreign language. It's a, it's a language that's going to be spoken commonly here pretty soon. And so do students have an opportunity? I, I think it's a great question. And as innovative as we've been and with the flexible credit attainment policy, I'm just curious. And when we were back and saw her last month, that she raised that issue.
So the state identifies which courses would be qualified for world language credits. It's not a local decision in there. So a student may take world language and identify a career in world languages, for example, and transcend that into CTE, meaning their CTE requirements. And we have local decisions to say that. I could be an interpreter. So a student, coding is already CTE, so it meets those things. But as far as coding become a world language, that would be a state decision.
Okay. And my last question, what do you see, what are you seeing as the most desired? Let me rephrase that. What are the jobs out there that are in highest demand? And how are we placing students in those jobs to compete for those high-demand jobs?
Right now, it's kind of like, this is a great time to be in CTE as a director. Okay? I've been in public education for thirty-five years. So what you have going on is the aging out of the workforce. So the last four years, I'm going to say, employers are pounding on our doors, wanting access to our graduates. Okay? And so as far as the pathways, it's like you, you really can't go anywhere. We've got high-quality graduates coming out of Tacoma Public Schools. Okay? We've got a graduation rate coming up on ninety percent. Okay? So we have kids that are leaving here ready and they have options, whether they want to go military, apprenticeship, trade school, university, or go directly into the world of work. So it's kind of a little bit, I, I shared four in-demand pathways, computer science, healthcare, career, skilled technical trades, environmental services. But there are so many pathways that lead to success. I, I, you know, I, I think one of the values of what, what you've charged us with is the innovative programs, the expanded learning opportunities. Seriously, when, when kids just have access to try something, that's really, our expanded learning opportunities are, most of them are taught by subject matter experts current in industry. Okay? So we're doing contract, we're doing some innovative things with contractual services and accessing adjunct instructors for us. I think most of, I think myself included, if I think back, a lot of what sparked my interest was, as an adult that I got networked with, that kind of showed me the industry. And I think that's what we're really trying to do. So to answer your question, I may go list after list of employers. If you even went through a quick Craigslist, you'll find that there's not too many businesses that aren't looking for people. They're looking for type of graduates that have a growth mindset. They, they bring it in, you know, bring into the culture, show up and work and, and grow into the business. I mean, I think you look around, what you're seeing is a lot more employers that have tuition reimbursement programs, where they take an incumbent employee that's been there six months and then build capacity in them, grow them into their culture. So if you look at nursing, if you went to multi-care, nursing would be one little piece of the healthcare careers of what they're hiring for. You know, all the, you know, X-ray technicians and, you know, the list just goes on and on. I think that's, you know, without putting up a bunch of data tables, I think that what's, our kids are making great choices. Our families and our community are supportive. And I think it's us with the, the interns, really, the internship and Career Connect are really strong pieces for connecting kids with a network so they can see the universe of opportunities and kind of find their, their place where they might want to go. I know I'm not answering your question with hard facts.
And I, I asked it because I remember a few years ago, you telling us that we couldn't produce enough welders.
That's...
The, the industry was just demanding qualified welders. So I was curious because I, I wonder if there's opportunity for greater partnership with the Chamber as a recruitment tool to say, here is a pipeline of qualified employees as an enticement to move into the district because then there becomes incentive, it's mutually beneficial. There's incentives for the district, there's opportunities for our students. There may be more people moving into Tacoma and buying houses and paying property taxes, which feeds our levees, like that sort of a comprehensive approach. And so I'm, I, I would be interested in us, you know, working in a more aggressive manner with the private sector as a recruitment into the city to have, because, you know, I, I'm all for students to go out and live their lives and, but I'm also interested in retaining those students because I think if they've had a great experience with Tacoma Public Schools and they have viable employment and they feel rooted here and supported here and a part of the community and they're employed, that they're going to have a sense of paying it forward. I just see multi-layers of benefit. And I don't know that we've talked as a board about those sorts of opportunities to engage. I feel like we mostly talk to the Chamber when we'd like their support to pass a bond issue. And I know you and others at the staff level are engaged, but I've been thinking about opportunities at the board level for us to have a reciprocal relationship. So it's not just every six years when we're trying to pass a capital bond. But how do we think about opportunities to partner with some of those organizations where the outcome is a meaningful employment experience, either through an internship or a full-time gig once they graduate? And I don't know that I have any fully formulated thoughts, but I'm just curious if there's like, hey, you can't produce enough of this skill set. Is that an opportunity then for the city and the Chamber and other groups that are doing economic development to partner with us to provide a labor force that's going to be dependable? So when they're thinking about, why would I relocate to Tacoma? Or why would I build a business in Tacoma? Because they know that they can get the best employees coming out of Tacoma Public Schools.
Yeah. Way not to go on and on.
Yeah.
No, no, for me.
That last part was probably more soapbox.
Let me, let me, I'll share a couple more things. I'm getting, I'm getting the luck. Probably my time's up here. But really quick, like Coresmo Construction down in the Thea Foss, it's on our project. So last year, Next Move set up a unpaid internship for three students. We, we set it up specifically for seniors. And then they interviewed for an hourly paid position when they graduated and they selected one to work in there. So building that path, pathway out in project management is where we're headed with that one. The, the Chamber of Commerce, that's, last year, we hooked up with Rick Berkowitz through the Chamber of Commerce, who opened the door for us with the Seafarers International Union for our Tide Flats kids that have their Merchant Marine credential. So now they can, we're, we're hooked up there. They want our kids and they want to help support them go to Piney Point, Maryland. That's where their registered apprenticeship is. So we're, we're going to have some breakthroughs here. Okay? You know, it's kind of like Teach Two-Five-Three, you know, I'm kind of embarrassed because I haven't shouted all these out to you, but Teach Two-Five-Three, teaching is an in-demand, family wage profession that we're pretty proud of. We have it at Lincoln High School, we have it at Mount Tahoma High School. Next year, we'll have it at Wilson High School. Okay? When you talk about in-demand, like manufact, advanced manufacturing where kids are programming machines, Lincoln High School, that's where we have the apprenticeship for production technician. If you go over there on a Tuesday night, you're going to see a dozen kids on high-tech advanced manufacturing. So, I mean, I can, I want to thank you for the challenging question. I, I'm so grateful for the support of this board and the leadership of the board. Okay? I'm going to have some things to share back with you as far as where we're headed with construction trades. We're in the process of, of eight different trade groups that will endorse our pre-apprenticeship construction trades program. It'll be at Lincoln High School. That's where we'll start it because we have the facility and capacity for that. That will include articulations with glazers, electricians, carpenters, labors, you know, I'm missing a couple. Plumbers are in that as well. Okay? So that's part of our journey. We should be able to enroll that next summer, not next school year. Okay? The other one is we're doing, we've been challenged by our business partners is to help kids and their families in middle school get more of that exploratory out. So we're launching a summer program this year for middle school. And it's not about sitting in classes. It's really not about skill development. It's about getting them off campus and go show them the universe of the networks you're talking about, Mr. Chairman, is out connecting them, look at the possibilities and talk to real people that do the work.
That's great. Thank you. I appreciate the presentation. Just, I, I think one of the things I heard for future presentations is the board would be interested, superintendent in, in that demographical information so that we can better understand where we are succeeding and where there's opportunity. And I think from an accountability standpoint and making certain that we're providing these amazing opportunities to all students in a representative fashion, much like we leaned in on academic acceleration and looked at how do you make certain kids have access to AP, making certain that all students have access and, and, and help us understand the barriers where as board members, we may be able to direct budget or resources or policy in order to make it happen. But I, I think we're all very excited about the, the good work. So please keep it up and we'll look forward to the next presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number seven, members of the public wishing to address the board. School board members encourage public participation. Your civil input is appreciated. If you would like to address the school board, follow these steps. Complete a citizen's request to speak card, which is located at the back of the auditorium. Submit the card to the school board secretary prior to the start of the meeting. Cards submitted after the public comment period is ended will not be considered at this session. The superintendent will call your name. When it is your turn to address the school board, please speak into the microphone. You may have up to three minutes to share your comments, or if there are a large number of speakers, time may be limited at the president's discretion. Superintendent, how many speakers do we have this evening?
We have four.
Okay, four speakers. So you'll each have the full three minutes.
First speaker, Jeffrey Green, followed by Rita Shadrugan. Rita. Thank you.
Hi, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Colonel Jeff Green. I'm a military pediatrician and I specialize in adolescent medicine. I'm not a parent of a student of the Tacoma School District, but I am a servant and I'm an advocate for their general health and well-being. So anyone else in the room who enjoys sleep, that is the premise of my discussion today. Just give you a little background and what I do. I'm a, I'm a primary care physician. I have a panel of patients that come in, about a thousand of them. And I also specialize in certain conditions unique to adolescents, reproductive health care, diagnosis and treatment of STDs, and mental health, to name a few, including depression, anxiety, and ADHD. When I was a resident almost twenty-five years ago, and I had fifteen minutes per patient, I was instructed to manage them quickly and expeditiously. My mentors told me if a student came in with complaint of poor concentration, I was to prescribe ADHD medicines, see them back in a month and see how they did. Along the way, I understood that it was more complex than just prescribing. I'm a prescriber, but as I get older, I tell my patients, as I get older, I want to stop prescribing medicine and focus on the regular general health of a human being, that being exercise, nutrition, and sleep. A few years ago, the Certain General, and I didn't mention, I'm a, a former adolescent consultant to the Certain General. And under her guidance, we learned something called the performance triad. And as I just mentioned, it's, involves nutrition, exercise, and sleep to, to create the fittest soldier. When, when that came out, I thought it was a, a unique concept, but understood that it was something that I was always talking to my patients about. So it wasn't unique and it is something that I can push and I'd go forward with that. One thing I'm concerned about is the adolescents' development during puberty and their circadian rhythms and how it changes based on their hormonal development. And the sleep that's required during that development increases. My concern is the timing of when the school starts.
Thank you. We appreciate you sharing your comments.
Okay, thanks.
Rita, followed by Jenna Fullerton.
Hi, my name is Rita Choudhury, and I'm a very, very proud employee of Tacoma Public Schools. I am a very private person, so I, it's difficult for me to share this. But in December of last year, I went home one night and found that I had received my health card, but my husband hadn't. This was a cause of concern because he'd had a fall and he'd dislocated his left shoulder. Things escalated and I came back the next morning and I brought my card to HR. And immediately Lisa deployed Cindy C. Armour, who came to look at my card, get into my computer, look at my application, and decide what had gone wrong and what hadn't happened. And that was like, the sixth was a Friday, she and I sat down, we wrote an appeal to the SEB Board. And we said, you know, when I'd done it and, you know, the information I'd put back in, I was very confident things would work out. This is America, you know, rule of law, we all know that. And I took care of my husband, took care of my job, did things. And things kind of snowballed with him and he had to have surgery on December thirty-first because so many tendons were torn and the shoulder was in such a bad state. The surgery went through. It was like the last day before my, our card expired. And then on the fifth or tenth of January, we got an email, a letter, and it was a legal letter, which says your, your appeal has been denied. And it had all these reasons that, you know, when we opened your account, we couldn't see you had logged in. My stress just hit the roof. I went up again and Lisa and Renee just looked at everything. They got my appeal ready. And I remember it was a Friday. I remember I was so stressed. It was about three o'clock. I was leaving the building. Tears were pouring down my face. I didn't want anybody to see me. I don't know what Carla was doing, but she pulled up next to me and I looked at her and she asked me to roll down my window. I did. And I had a massive meltdown. And she said, this is not right. I'm going to take care of it. This is not okay. And she was so strong in her support, it kind of melted my heart. An hour or so later, Josh called, exactly the same thing. You're not to worry. We'll take care of it. This has happened before. Monday morning, I was back at work. Lisa and Renee were in their office, in Lisa's office. They called me in and they said, we're talking to the lawyers there. We're talking to people. One of the things in the appeal that said was I had a spousal, what was it? Tobacco survey. Well, how did they know I had a spouse if they said, they said that I hadn't put it in? Anyway, you know, at that point of time, I wasn't sane enough to go through that and think about it. Cut a long story short, five days later, the lawyer from the SEB Board called me, apologized for any problems that had happened, and we got our card. That means a lot to me. It means a lot to people who work here. That's the level of support we receive. And I just wanted you to know, I wanted everybody else to know how grateful I am that I work for this team. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jenna Fullerton, followed by, sorry, Samarika Williams, I believe.
My name is Jenna Fullerton, and this is my first year as the librarian at Stadium High School. And I let kids sleep in the library in the morning before school, just so you know. I'm here to express appreciation for the partnership that our district has with Tacoma Public Library, and it provides all of our students with access to the public library resources. This collaborative work is called the Pathway Program, and it gives every student a public library account, which allows kids to check out books. But the big gem for us as school librarians is the access to the online databases. Tacoma Public Library has a large variety of databases, which we use for research projects. These would normally cost a school district thousands of dollars every year, but we have access to them through the Tacoma Public Library. Our society is flooded with information of all kinds. As a librarian, I want to teach kids what sources provide high-quality information and how to evaluate and use these resources. The databases have been a key element of our library and instruction learning this year. It's gratifying to see students' eyes light up when they find good quality resources as we're working with the databases. I want to give many thanks to Sarah Sunshine Holloway at Tacoma Public Library and to Susanna Panter, who is our director of school libraries, for making this all possible. This partnership is making a positive impact on our kids every day in our school libraries. And thank you for encouraging these community connections that make a difference for our kids.
Excuse me, Samarika Williams?
Hi, okay, my name's Samarika Williams.
No, it's okay, it's okay. Say it again.
Samarika.
Samarika.
Yeah, yeah. I'm a sophomore at Wilson High School, I'm freshman, or sophomore class president, and I'm also the captain of the track team, which is my purpose for coming here today. Recently, January through February, I traveled a lot with my club team, and I got a lot of exposure for track, and I believe that that's what made me come to this high level that I'm at right now. And school track season's about to start, and recently I was invited to a high school track meet in California, and I qualified for it, but I was the only one on my high school team that qualified, so they couldn't send me because they couldn't insure me, because they couldn't send another coach to come with me. So my purpose for coming today was, I wanted to give background first, that Wilson Track and Field is one of the only track teams in Tacoma that hasn't traveled in the last six to seven years for track, but our basketball travels almost every year to California. And second, I think that traveling for track and other sports, not just track, would help build our community, because it could help our, it could help the people in our community get involved with funding, get involved with school spirit, get involved knowing that students are working for something and they want something more than just going to their classes, it gives them something to look forward to. And so, what I'm here today to try to ask is for guidance and advice on how to ensure that my plan for traveling next year can take place.
Dr. Garcia.
So, we can work with you through the Student Life Office, so there's some particular things that we have to make sure that we're clear about, what is WIA sanctioned activities versus club activities? But the short answer is, is we can, if you reach out to the Student Life, Mr. James Neal, and I'll step out and make sure that you have my contact as well after this, and we'll help you navigate that system.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Samarika.
That concludes public comment. Item number eight, consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Move approval.
Second.
Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye? Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries 5-0. Item number nine, policy matters, there are none under consideration this evening. Item number 10, financial report. Presentations on the financial health of the district will be made during regular board meetings on a quarterly basis. Monthly financial statements can be found on the district website at tacomaschools.org. About finance. 10.1, budget and legislative update. Ms. Medina.
Good evening, thank you so much for the opportunity to have a hopefully brief conversation with you about just some budget and legislative updates that I would like to share with you. You know, I was looking back recently at some historical documents, trying to just tell a story about where we have been, and when I went back and looked at a presentation from October of 2017, this is something that we had prepared for the board, to try and give you an understanding of the types of impacts that we were expecting to see. And at that point in time, in October 2017, we had a pretty good idea that the 2019 through 21 series of budgets would be some tough ones. There was a lot of impact that was being expected, and so, you know, we saw a good majority of that in the last budget cycle. It doesn't necessarily mean that this cycle is over for us, but, you know, just looking back, it tells us, last year, we made a very significant impact to our budget, and we worked hard to renorm our budget. We knew that we would have to reset and have an expectation of how we would be able to keep our revenues and expenditures in check with each other, and that we used fund balance last year to offset any overages of expenditures, but we knew that's not something that was going to be sustainable long-term. So, part of what we did last year, in addition to the fund balances, we also made some pretty significant administrative reductions. We had a certificated reduction in force that was in play, as well as we worked hard to go through and lean up and reprioritize programming to ensure that we could balance our budget for the future year. Just a quick reminder around our Budgeting by Priorities annual process, we run a two-year process, so we try to align ourselves to the legislative cycle. We work on a budgeting by priorities process, that's where we work to have proposals submitted that are telling us how the work that's going to be done will align to the strategic goals of the district. Those are then purchased, we call them purchased, they're analyzed and purchased, using the funding that we have. In this year's cycle, those that are blue, the identifying, funding, the buying, and the communicating, those are the activities that happen in the buy year. So currently, we're in the process of identifying funding, that's coming through both the legislature, our levy, as well as other local resources or federal resources, and then we will work on the buying aspect, which is where we make decisions about what the deficit or impact looks like, and how we will make adjustments to that, and then of course, we'll work on the communication component. Some issues that we're working on as we speak, these are our current factors that are playing into our budget for the 2021 cycle. Sick leave and SEB benefits, we have a Paid Family Medical Leave Act that's currently still impacting us, we haven't necessarily had all of our groups bargain, have an open bargain yet, and so we haven't been paying the tax for those groups that are not currently in an open bargain, that's, we have to account for those in our future budget, as well as SEB benefits. I think that while we are still identifying more eligible staff than what we have planned for in the current year, so more people are eligible than we anticipated, what we're seeing with the legislature's most recent budgets, which I'll talk about a little more in a couple more slides, is that we're going to see a slight decrease in our expenditures for the 2021 cycle around SEB. I'll get back to that in a minute. Bargaining impacts, we have current and future bargaining impacts, we know we will continue to bargain salaries and benefits with our multiple bargaining units, as well as the fact that 85% of our wages, 85% of our budget is in salary and benefit packages, and so that has a significant impact on our budget. Currently, our revenues do not exceed the amount of increase that we have each year in our wages, so that's something that we will need to consider moving forward. We have program needs that'll be coming up. This year will be a Hunt planning year, the Hunt Middle School will open in the 21-22 budget cycle, but we'll need to start doing some pre-planning for that over the summer, we'll need to consider what those impacts will look like as we get into this budget cycle, I know that's a year and a half out, but. Preventative maintenance impacts and other impacts that we're trying to look at, the internal maintenance issues that we want to address, and I say maintenance issues from how we manage our budget every year, not necessarily from a, you know, a wrench and lead pipe type maintenance. Then there was the hold harmless that we had last year, hold harmless was an allocation that we received from the state to help offset our levy lost in the 2019 calendar year. So in the 1920 year, they gave us $7.8 million to help with the loss of September, October, November, and December of 2019. We do have a little bit of a hold harmless that's planned for in the budgets, about a half a million dollars for the 2021 cycle, so we weren't expecting that, and that's a great excitement for us, we're looking at that as trying to understand what that really entails, and we're no longer LEA eligible, Local Effort Assistance eligible, we have surpassed that with our current assessed value. So, I think that's something that plays into this conversation as well, just making sure that we're getting all of the dollars that we are supposed to get, but making sure that we're actually eligible for them before we plan for them. And then finally, fund balance usage was included in our budget last year, so that means that we have expenditures that exceeded our regular revenues, and if we're not going to get revenues to cover those expenditures, then we have to either reduce expenditures from last year's overage, or come up with new revenues to cover them. Deficits are our new normal, and that's something that we will need to address on a regular basis. Primarily, it comes in salaries and benefits, and being again, 85% of our budget. We only have a few strategies for managing our budget when it comes to deficits. You know, we'll continue to work in monitoring and advocating the legislation and reducing those legislative impacts, and we will track and monitor our internal costs, so we can reduce or eliminate or avoid costs the best we can. And then lastly, we can increase revenues and grants as best we can. They're also very limiting. Local levy is not something that we can increase on our own without legislative action. Federal resources are not something that we can impact without federal resources being reallocated. So we'll continue our advocacy around those activities, but they're relatively fixed from our perspective, which means that the local revenues that we can produce on our own are also very limited. And finally, then we have the conversation around whether or not we utilize savings to help balance our budget. Again, savings are one-time dollars, so we want to do a fine balance between how much resources we put into our fund balance to hold over for emergency service and rainy day funds, as well as how much we're holding back so that we're not taking dollars that should be intended for students that are currently in the system and pocketing them for a short period of time. When I get into some of the specifics around the legislature, it's exciting, the House and the Senate both released their budgets this week, and they did it in tandem, which is always a pretty good sign that they're on the same page with some slight modifications. That means also, it's a good signal for us that they're going to end on time. So this is a great experience for us, we love having all of that information right up front, however, we haven't done some detailed analysis yet on specifically what some of those impacts might mean to us. We are in the process of doing that now, and we will have a more specific deficit number for you in the future. We know we will have a deficit based on everything that we're seeing, but it won't be as significant as we may have initially thought, and I really wouldn't expect it to be significant in any way, shape, or form. Certainly nothing like what we've seen in the last year. I think that it's important to note that the Senate and the House have come out very clearly and said initially that there will be minimal increases, that they don't have a lot of resources, and that this is an adjustment year. So essentially, trying to set our expectations around what we can see in those budgets. One of the things that does help us is the implicit price deflator is lower than we anticipated. It had been 1.9% last year, around 2% is where we expected it to be, and it has come in at 1.6%. So what that really does, from a benefit from our perspective, is all those salaries that we pay for outside of what is funded by the state, we only have to pay a 1.6% increase on those salaries instead of a 2% increase, and so those are levy resources that could be utilized differently, or to help offset the deficit in a different way. Two big variances between the Senate and the House budget, most of the items were copacetic, but in the Senate, they were really pushing for a special education formula increase. As you are aware, we currently spend around $7 million on our levy, of our levy on special education services, and while we're required to provide those services federally, we also should be talking about how we're going to come up with better ways of paying for those resources through a basic education lens. The local levy dollars are not the intended resources to be used for special education, perhaps, and I think that that is a different conversation for legislative action, and I know that we've had this conversation here on the dais once before. Then when we looked at the House budget, they have not supported the special education formula increase, but instead replaced that with counselors for high-need schools, which would also have a great benefit for the district, and I think speaks to the desire to support mental health and those types of services that the legislature has talked thoroughly about this year. We did get an acknowledgement of challenges from the legislature, they recognize that ed funding is not fixed, and they have verbally vocalized that, you know, that's an exciting thing for us as well. And then finally, SEB, they recognize is a long-term issue. When I pulled our SEB numbers, and actually, these numbers changed again after I pulled them today, so this is not necessarily the most up-to-date, but I think that it's representative of what's going on.
Can I just interrupt for a second, I'm just gonna, I have to leave, so I'm just not leaving because of your presentation.
Thank you.
I have some family illness issues I have to take care of, so.
Sorry to hear that.
The board is aware of that, okay.
So the SEB impact costs, we have around 1,972 funded units, those are the units that the state defines for us through the prototypical funding allocation. They say that based on the number of students that you have and where they fall, that they will fund us for around 1,972 positions. That has a cost impact to the district of around $23.995 million. We'll receive revenues in to cover the costs of those, so there's no impact to our budget for those resources. But when we do look at the unfunded mandated benefits, those are the staffs that we are funding benefits for that are not funded by the state, and so those are local revenues, or their federal revenues, or other grant revenues that are being utilized to help pay for the benefit costs associated with those staff members. That is actually about $600,000 less than what we put into the current year's budget. So that's the budget impact that we're seeing. When I look at the total impact of costs for SEB, almost $47 million, and I look back before we had SEB, we only put about $39 million into health benefits. So you can see that there's a significant increase in the benefits that we have seen over the period of the SEB implementation, but we've budgeted most of that in last year when we did our renorming process, we knew those expenses were coming, we tried to build in as best we could. Looks like we've done a really pretty reasonably good job, I think that we were helped out as well by the legislature. The cost of benefits will decline from where it is currently at 1056, down to 1014, which is the House number, or $1,000 per month per employee. We do have a couple of bills we're watching, I'm not sure why that one showed up in green, but it's really special, and I think that the first one here is probably the one that's most alarming and most troubling for us from a financial perspective. Excuse me. This is the requirement to provide health and retirement services or costs for transportation contractors. So what this means is, we currently have about 103 bus driver routes that are run through our first student contractor, and the first student contractor does not offer a robust benefit package as significant as SEB, and it does not offer a retirement package like what our pers or ters or sirs retirement packages would look like. This bill would require those vendors to provide those benefit packages, and what that in turn means is, we would then have to work with our vendor to provide additional resources to cover the costs of those, they would pass those costs back on to us. What that looks like from a SEB perspective is about $1.2 million of expenditure possibility, and retirement could be up to $1 million. So we're looking at over two and a half, or roughly around $2.5 million that we could see in added contractor expenses on an annual basis if they're required to provide that service. And then the second bill is appropriations for special education and the enhancement to the multiplier. Again, I said, the Senate included that as part of their budget package, but the House did not, I think that there'll be a negotiation now as to whether or not they decide over one or the other. And then just a reminder of our budget timeline, this is where we're seeing that the legislature likely will end on time, which puts us on track for what we're expecting, and I think I'm running over a little from the time that I anticipated, the next three slides are really related to communication strategies. I have them here so that you can take a look at them if you'd like, but I'd like to bring them back at the March 12th meeting as part of a, you know, budget communication plan. I do have three items that I need to share with you just real briefly. I provided you tonight with a timeline of finance and budget activities that you're expecting to see, I've updated that with some information, it's the long sheet that you have in front of you, and so that you just have an awareness that I'll try to bring that back on a regular basis to let you know and keep you on track for where we are. A few of the things had to be reshuffled around based on the fact that I was out ill last week, and things that I had intended to be able to cover with you, we weren't able to cover. One of those being the board policy draft, we would like for you to have some eyes on the board policy around budget, and I will be sending an email to you tomorrow so that you have that, and we will try to do a first reading sometime in March for that. Additionally, you had asked last week at the board meeting about when we might produce a resolution for refinance, we are anticipating that that resolution would be in front of you in March, I meet with Freddie Yoff next week to discuss the possibilities around that and to start working with underwriters, so I'm hoping that we should be able to get that to you in a relatively short fashion. And then finally, I have provided you this evening as well, a draft budget guidelines and criteria around providing the superintendent with some parameters over how the budget would be adjusted in the situation where we do actually have the deficit, which I expect is the situation. So I would seek feedback on those items, and that we would like to bring the budget guidelines back to you for approval in the March 12th meeting, so I think that that does give us some time to discuss them, but it doesn't put it into a public forum unfortunately, which is what I had hoped we might have the opportunity to do at the study session. Thank you for your time, that's all I had to prepare for this evening.
Questions or comments on the budget?
Vice President Cobb?
I have two questions, one on the SEB changes. From a policy standpoint, do you have a, is there a resolution about who covers substitutes who might work in two districts, like in the case that some, a person is paid from two different districts, who's responsible for the benefits?
I believe that it is the first I believe that it is the first one. I don't want to misquote. I can certainly have us provide you with that information. My first guess is, my first recollection is, it's not a guess, is that it was the first district who got to 630 hours reported, not both, not between both districts. If you get to 630 in one district, that district reports, and then they're responsible for that individual.
Okay.
But I'll double-check and make sure.
Then my other question is maybe harder to answer. It's related to, it's related to regionalization and the changes we've been talking about in property values or assessed values in our area. I just don't know or have a sense of how things are changing in other districts or other parts of the state in relation to like the average, and I'm wondering if it's far off that increases in our assessed value would tip us into another tercile or another category, or if that's close, given how we're, how property values in our area continue to grow.
Yeah, the state legislature, as part of the LEAP package, produced a regionalization listing of all the different districts. We can try to bump that up to some assessed valuation comparisons and see if anything pops out as giving us an understanding of where that, whether that means that we should be fighting for a different grouping or not. I know that they, as part of the legislative review, they went back and looked at it again through the legislative budget cycle.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Additional questions or comments on the budget?
I have a couple of questions for you, Rosalyn.
Yes.
On slide, on slide number eight, the SEB cost impacts.
Yes.
So the $580,000 less is because it's less than we had anticipated. But what I heard you say is that the district typically spends about $39 million on benefits, and now we anticipate spending almost $47 million.
Let me be more clear.
Did I hear that correctly?
Let me be more clear.
It's not costing us less to provide benefits than we typically have paid?
Prior to SEB, so in the 1819 year, our benefit costs were around $39 million. In the 1920 year, we budgeted a little over $47 million. And now for 2021, it's going to be $600,000 less that we'll need to budget to cover those same costs. So over the period of time with the implementation of SEB, we've gained that $8 million or so of costs, but from the 1920 budget to the 2021 budget, we don't have to eat $8 million. We've already addressed and accounted for those resources.
And that $580,000 is more reflective of you and your team's ability to crystal ball what that impact is going to be, not costing.
I would love to say that, but no, I think that it's more along the lines of the fact that the legislature adjusted the rate down, and while we had, we have more people eligible than we had planned for, and so we anticipated that there would be more costs because of that, the rate that we're being charged is lower, so it's kind of balancing out in that respect. And it just so happens that there's around, I mean, I look at this and I think, yeah, we're like kind of right on, but I don't look at it and say, we really did a great job at this. I mean, it's, it's just, it's kismet. It works out in the end.
But as a district, we're still paying $8 million. What, the, the impact that SEB has to us as a district on our budget is an additional $8 million that we in the past have not had to pay?
Yes, that's correct, but we're not having to put, we're not having to build that in exclusively in the 2021 cycle. We've already addressed that in the 1920 cycle.
Did they change the reimbursement rate, or that's just our new normal?
The reimbursement.
Is we pay $8 million a year more for?
The ream, okay. I mean, the, yes, they changed the reimbursement rate. Last, in the 1920 year, they provided us with, it was about a little around, a little more than $1,000 on average, because they started with 996, and then it went to like $10,075, and then it went down to 1056. And so these, the rate has changed three times in the 1920 year. Then in 2021, the rate will go down to 1,014. That's the highest. It could actually go down to 1,000, and we could save a little bit more than this. I'm not sure if I'm.
So I guess what I'm getting at is.
Fighting your question.
What did we pay for benefits in 2017, 2018? Did we pay 40, almost 47 million?
No, that was the, in 1819, it was $39 million.
So the, so the impact of the legislation is we now, as a district, have to figure out, because the legislature doesn't cover the costs of SEB for everybody, we as a district have to figure out how to cover that $8 million. Now, we're accounting for it going forward. We now just know every year going forward until they change the model, the rate, it's $8 million more, and if the price of care goes up or the rate goes down.
Then we have to address that impact, just that rate impact. I mean, the only difference that I would categorize in what your statement was, was we have figured out how to work $8 million into our budget.
Well, but what you've done is, last year, is made deductions, and so.
Correct.
Made reductions so that you were ready for it.
So the cost shift, I guess my point is the cost shifting has come from the state to the local school district, which then puts the onus on local taxpayers, because I'm assuming we use levy dollar to cover the benefit, right? So now, instead of the state adequately reimbursing at a rate that's commensurate with what the actual cost of the care is.
Right.
They've cost shifted $8 million onto the local taxpayer, even though we were told that levy money shouldn't go towards salary, but all of a sudden it's okay to go towards benefit, which I find odd, because that, to me, would be considered a part of total compensation. And then I hear they want to pass the benefit from a private company.
They want to mandate.
Onto local taxpayers.
They want to mandate state benefits on private companies.
So now, they're going to mandate, rather than the private company having to be responsible for covering the cost.
Yes.
They're going to shift another burden onto the local taxpayer on top of the $8 million that they've already given us. So now we're almost at $10 million through this SEB benefit package.
That's true. Yes.
That's troubling. I don't know how that's, I don't know how they think that that's sustainable. I, we have to figure out, because then there's cuts for services, and we hear from the community how we remove programs and services and people, because we have to accommodate the legislature. And, and my understanding is there's no meaningful work being done on SEB this legislative session, that they've assigned some sort of a study to ways and means, and they've effectively punted until. So do we need a pretty aggressive interim educational strategy so that people understand, so that legislators understand that when you may, I don't think any of us don't want people to have benefits. I, I think that there's a little bit of hypocrisy when those costs shifting down to that local taxpayer at, at the direction of the legislature.
And, and I really do appreciate that. I think that, you know, from my perspective, the way that we want to address this from an advocacy perspective would be more along the lines of enhancing the prototypical allocations, because then that in turn drives the SEB. We should be responsible for the benefits that we choose to provide, because we're enhancing and enriching services where the state isn't, but then the state isn't fully funding the services that really are needed and required. So that's, I think that's the only nuance I would add to that.
So we need them to pay for the 1,885 unfunded units. Our approach would be to have more state money, that we would argue that that's a part of basic education and should be funded through the prototypical model, which would reduce our costs?
Yeah.
Okay.
I did go down yesterday and testify on the, on the contracted workers and just said, hey, yeah, we would love to have our contracted workers have benefits. We can't pay for it, so. And there was one other superintendent that was there, and the Teamsters were there saying, yeah, get it for us, so it's going to be interesting.
I, I guess I don't understand why the, why the push isn't on the private sector company to cover the cost of the benefits for, they're not public.
Well, they will. The, the emphasis will be on the private companies, but, but what we know is that the way the private companies get their money to pay their contractors is through us. So yeah, the bill says that the private contractor will provide the funds, but the reality of that is it's always passed through to us.
To the customer, right. So when these agencies start to subcontract or make contracts with local school districts, their rates are going to increase because of the benefit costs. There's no requirement that they pass those on to us. We just.
They just do.
Know that they're going to.
Yeah. My concern is I think at some point it's going to beg the question, can we afford to provide transportation at the rate that we do? Are we going to have to look at different ways to provide transportation? Because it becomes cost prohibitive when it just gets shifted down on us.
It will certainly require.
I don't know how, you know, I think there's going to be tough decisions, but I also think there may be some innovative ways to get at transportation needs if there's going to be more cost shifting onto the local taxpayer. I just don't know how that's sustainable. I don't know how well that's going to go over with the local taxpayer. And we've been very well-supported in Tacoma, but that sort of downshifting of costs, I think, is problematic. As we, my last question, when we look at our collective bargaining agreements and SEB, how does that play into, I know we see that we're at 85%. Are there any, if, if we're in a collective bargaining agreement and as, as the legislature makes changes to SEB, is that an opener? How does that work?
I would say that SEB is the state law, and we are working to comply with the state law. It really, it's almost, in most cases, irrespective of what's included in the contract unless you've bargained the few things that are eligible to be bargained around SEB. So the, we're, we're just tagging on to whatever the state law requires us to do.
So we're in the, we're in the midst of a CBA with the teachers right now. If next year the legislature makes some sort of radical change to the benefits package, that wouldn't necessarily have a negative impact on our existing collective bargaining agreement?
In the current CBA, it says that if there's legislative changes, we will mutually agree to address those. So we'll follow the law, essentially, is what it says.
Okay, and is that the language we have in all of our contracts?
No, because they haven't all been reopened, but it references the law, the current RCW or WAC, which allows us to continue to follow the law. There, there could be requests to reopen on a, on a salary re opener, but this is part of a whole compensation package, so we just haven't gotten those kinds of requests, and there's only one feature that could be negotiated outside of the law.
Okay, thank you. Vice President Cobb?
Back to transportation funding. I know that it's not funded through the prototypical model, but is there any reference in the funding model to the FTE that are generated based on your transportation allocation? Like, not as a driver, but is there any kind of FTE reference in the model that's called out?
It's based on number of routes and efficiency is how the primary funding formula works with the transportation side of it. So I don't, I don't think so.
Are there any benefit allocations through the formula?
But for internal, and then we can apply for resources for our contractor, but again, it goes back to routes and efficiency as to whether or not you'd be 100% funded. So there's a certain potential that some of those expenses could potentially be picked up through the state, but we are almost at our 100%. In fact, I believe that we're right at that efficiency limit. So that's where I say we would probably have to bear the impact of that. I don't think that we would be in a situation where we're going to be receiving a significant amount of money from the state to cover those expenses.
Okay, thank you.
Other districts might, though.
Any additional questions or comments?
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number 11, curriculum and instruction. 11.1, approval of the Carl Perkins Five One-Year Transition Grant Application and Career and Technical Education District-Wide Plan.
The Assistant Superintendent for K-12 Learning and Support recommends that the Board of Directors approve the submission of the Carl Perkins Five Grant Application with the District-Wide Plan and Plan for Annual Program Evaluation for the Career and Technical Education Department.
Is there a motion to approve?
Move.
Wait a second.
Are there any questions or comments? Hearing down all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries four zero. Item number 12, business matters. There are none under consideration this evening. Item 13, other business. 13.1, operating protocol revisions, first reading. The board met last Saturday in a retreat to look at our operating protocols. In part of the preparation, we realized that those protocols have last been updated in I'm the only current member of the board that was on the board back then, so we thought it would be appropriate for us collectively to have a conversation around the, the protocols that govern how we do the work of the people on the school board, given that 80% of the current board members had not been a part of that conversation. In 2012, we had a WASDA, Washington State School Directors Association facilitator, facilitator retreat using WASDA best practices, and so our current list of 19 operating protocols was generated through that process. Similarly, on, this past Saturday, we had a facilitator who helped us. We used, and you'll see it linked to tonight's agenda, we used as a resource the Serving on Your Local School Board Handbook, New Board Member Handbook, which is what the Washington State School Directors Association provides to all new school board directors. A really good resource for best practices, evidence-based. And then we just, as a group, kind of talked through, given the outcomes we want to achieve, what would be the best way for us to commit to one another and to the public to work with each other and the superintendent to do the best, the best that we can for the Tacoma School District. And with that, this is a first reading, so this is our opportunity for observation or substantive issues that you'd like to bring to light, and then we will vote on this, we'll formally adopt it at our next public business meeting. Director Bomber.
Yeah, well, first of all, thank you to Tanya and for pulling this together. It was quite a robust conversation, moving things around, and so I think you did a great, really great job of capturing what was said. I think there are a couple of components that seem to have fallen out that I think are substantive, and I would want to put, just put it back in somewhere. So the first one being, we talked about, well, under, let me go to the second one. Boards, boardsmanship, says the board will function through, and I was saying, following public forums, so to, you know, kind of add that to indicate that they are public and we're transparent, so I want to make sure we talk about that. And then there's a list, but we left out this part, which is the executive sessions, and I know they're not public, but they're also important, because they are how we get, you know, business done, and I, I'm sure that our council could give us the exact language, but I was thinking something like for sensitive personnel or legal issues with executive session are held, board members will honor the confidentiality of the discussion, because I think there's several points, the fact that we can have them, executive sessions, the fact that we need to have them because they're sensitive, non-public issues. And so I'd recommend that we put that back in. I don't know if you want to talk about them one by one, or?
Sure.
Anybody have thoughts on that?
Thoughts on executive session? Putting the language, I see I had nodded a thumb up, and I'm in concurrence. I think putting that back in is important. We get a thumbs up from general counsel, that's always encouraging when the attorney tells us, yes, we're on the right track. Did you have additional substantive changes?
Yeah. Well, one of, I can, okay, that one's not substantive, just moving it, so I'll give that one somewhere else. The other one that I thought was substantive was when we get to the last thing, and we're talking about when board members serve on, serve on committees, slightly confusing about whether it was our own board committees or what, so I thought it would, would be important to put in, when the board members serve on various district or committee, community committees, community committees, right, or attend committee meetings, their role shall be the liaison, so that it's clear that it's not just our internal meetings, but it's mostly our external meetings we're talking about, that the board members, and that sentence, the next sentence is, in these meetings, the director's first priority will be, and Tacoma students, of course, absolutely, but I think it's, it's as a board member, we're responsible to the district as well. And I think we're talking about these community meetings where we may individually be passionate about a topic, but we want to make it super clear that the, since we're serving as a board member on that committee, that community committee, that the priority has to be the district and the Tacoma students. And so I would add district or community as a descriptor up above and under the first sentence, and then in the second sentence, I would add priority will be either aligned with Tacoma public school goals and the, and the well-being of Tacoma students, or something to indicate that priority one is the district and stu, and, and students. Does that make some sense?
Yeah, and I, my addition would be language that would also specify that we are, that we represent the position of the Tacoma School Board and the Tacoma School District while at that committee meeting. So we may have.
And that's even clearer.
Right, to that, to your point.
That's what I was trying to say, yeah. We're not there personally.
Yes, we are there as a representative of the district to represent the position of the district.
Right, and, yeah.
And the interest of the district.
And then my other is just moving something to a different place, but that's not a big deal.
Thank you. Additional comments? Vice President Cobb?
I don't have specific words to. I don't have specific words to suggest for these changes. And I don't know if they really need to be changes, but the one thought I had about some of the items in the meeting section, including number seven and... I feel like the reference to contacted a week before the meeting makes sense because I was part of the conversation around like our cycle of agenda setting and, and some of the process behind it. But I think that in the absence of having that context here, if you were just a community member reading it, it reads really like prescriptive and like inflexible. So, I don't know if there's a way to, in lieu of referencing the week, but reference the agenda review...
Sure. Consistent with board policy regarding agenda setting.
Something that doesn't read so prescriptive.
Yeah. I think a clarifier would help.
Okay.
Head nods? Yes? Any additional questions or comments? I think I just appreciate, I think it was a good dialogue on Saturday, four hours of just sitting and talking about these sorts of things that are important to how we operate, not only individually as board members, but also our interaction with the superintendent. So, I appreciated your insight as to how do we potentially put you in awkward positions when we work in the collective? And I think we clarified the expectation for one another and with you, what that process will look like. This will come before us for a second reading in two weeks. So, shall we, if you have additional edits, submit them to Tanya, who can put it in the aggregate for the final document? And then we'll also have, before we vote on it at that final meeting, if there's anything that's just absolutely rubbing you the wrong way, you could raise it. But the hope would be that you have clarified that ahead of time so that we can leverage the next two weeks, because this has been a tremendous amount of work that Tanya has had to do to pull this together, so we can give her some lead time. And I think that's consistent with no surprises, which is one of our soon-to-be-adopted board protocols. Right. Item number fourteen, report to the board. There is none this evening. Item number fifteen, board comments and reports. I'm going to start with our student representative.
I have nothing to report.
Welcome. This is your first meeting on the dais. You've joined us for a study session previously. First time under the bright lights, so welcome. We're happy to have you here, a part of the team. Anything exciting going on at your school?
Nothing much.
Or not exciting?
But, well, juniors are preparing for the SATs on the fourth. And our school is preparing for our multicultural assembly, I believe, in May.
Thank you. We'll move into our committee reports. JMAC Quarterly Report. Director Cobb or Director Baumbruh? Director Baumbruh?
Okay. So, for those of you who don't know, JMAC stands for the Joint Municipal Action Committee. And it is, gets together once, the first Friday, I think, of every month. And it's made up of two representatives from the City of Tacoma, two from Pierce County, two from the Port of Tacoma, two from Metro Parks, and two from Tacoma Public Schools, and one from the Puyallup Tribe. And, I just forgot to put that one on. And so, it's really actually quite a fantastic group of thinkers and systems, systems folks. And they are the elected officials or the highest level of board members on that committee. So, on that, for that entity. So, it's, it's like-minded elected officials, which is kind of nice. So, we met on Friday, February fourteenth. And we had, first, we had a conversation with Julie Anderson, who's the auditor for Pierce County, and she was telling us all about census planning and all about the portal that'll be open in March and exactly how for self-reporting. And was talking about the quality, the question assistance centers that are going to be set up around the county to help people who don't want to or can't have, don't have access to fill it out online. So, that was good information. Found out that former Governor Gary Locke will be the state chair for the Census Committee for the State of Washington. So, that's exciting. And he's going to be taking a tour bus around to try and pitch getting as many people as possible to do the census. They're hoping to make, the bus will take two stops. Hopefully, one of them will be in Tacoma. We're still lobbying for that, so... But we know that fourteen percent of Pierce County doesn't actually have internet, so we have to get a lot of these question assistance centers set up so that people can, can do that in person. But for those that are interested, it's, the local census page is piercecountycensus.org. So, if you're interested and you want to know anything more about it, you can go to that page. Census Day is April first, so that will be the kind of culmination of getting it all done by then. So, that was, that was good to hear from her. And then Pierce County, on their other information, talked about that moving to take another shot at the one-tenth of one percent tax for the, to create thirteen million dollars a year in revenue based for mental health. And that was pretty exciting. And that's actually on the docket for the tenth of March. And so, those of you who are interested in that can go to the county council meeting and participate or listen to that. So, that's pretty, going to be pretty exciting. They also talked about the Pipeline Trail. City of Tacoma finished their part, and now the county is, is looking to finish that piece. And so, it's, it goes from downtown Tacoma all the way to Orange Gate Park in Puyallup. So, it's pretty exciting that they're pretty, you know, trying to work on getting that done. Okay. So, that was Port of Tacoma. Talked a little bit about what was, you know, sort of some, some projects that they've been working on and updating Port's Clean Air Strategy and some other workforce development on CTE. They're working with Tacoma Public Schools. I loved it. Everyone, every single person there mentioned a great project they were doing with Tacoma Public Schools. And they didn't have that same interconnection with each other as much as we were the common denominator in all of those relationships. So, let's go team. The next was City of Tacoma. And they talked about their nineteen, two thousand and nineteen accomplishments, code changes allowing churches to help the homeless, South Sound Housing Authority Accountability Partners, and of course, you know, a couple of new council members. And, you know, there was a lot of other things there. On that, Metro Parks was proud to announce that they won the two thousand and nineteen Gold Medal National Award for the National Association's Park Champion Award. And it was for the size of communities, two hundred to five hundred thousand people. They won, there's only one given nationally, and Tacoma Public, Metro Parks got it. So, I mean, woo-hoo for that. And part of what they got it for was the unique partnerships that they have with Tacoma Public Schools. So, yes, again, we're playing, playing a role in the health of our partners. So, those were the big pieces. And, and then, of course, we shared about the bond had just passed, and we talked a little bit about what that meant. And, well, this was, the superintendent, Santorin, was there. This is, once a quarter, we have the CEOs of each of these organizations come and do a quarterly report. And so, this was that time. And so, superintendent came and talked a little bit about what we've been doing. And, and you've heard a lot about what we've been doing here, so I won't repeat it. But it was a fabulous meeting, and I look forward to next month.
Great. Thank you.
And by the way, Director or Vice President Cobb is the, also the Vice President of that board. So, that committee group, work group. So, she's busy. But, so she was nice enough to let me report today.
Sounds like we're well-presented. Vice President Cobb, anything to add?
Nope. Director Baumbruh covered it.
Excellent. Next committee report, Citizen Finance and Audit Committee. That's a committee that Director Baumbruh and I serve on. It's, there are five community members. It's chaired by Mr. Willie Stewart and four members of the community that are financial professionals that give us a third-party assessment of the financial status and practice of the district. During the most recent meeting, we had an update from our Chief Financial Officer, similar to the budget and legislative briefing that she gave us this evening, an update on the bond and what that's going to entail with the sale of the bond and the implications for, potentially for lower tax rates for our taxpayers over time because of the historically low rates right now. I don't know that the public generally knows that we have, within Tacoma Public Schools, a Director of Internal Audit. And I think that was really wise several years ago when the superintendent put that position in place. So, we have somebody who is constantly scrutinizing our practices. We had to report back on things that they're continuously looking at, cash handling practices at, at ballgames when you show up at the gym, ticket sales, are there best practices in place for how that money is accounted for? And it's just encouraging for us to be thinking about always how to get better. And I think one of the things as a large district that we get the privilege of every year is to have a, an audit from the state auditor's office. And I think this puts us in a, a pretty good position because we don't wait for the SAO to come in. We're on a daily basis, looking at our practices. And I think is an organization that's committed to continuous improvement. There are times, I can't recall any serious findings, but there have been opportunities for us to get better, for us to tighten up policies and trainings and practices. And so, we will endeavor to provide more of that information out because I think it's important for the public to understand what we're doing as an organization from a board, superintendent, and community perspective to make certain that we are the very best stewards of public resources. Director Baumbruh, anything to add?
Nope. I think you did a fabulous job. Thanks.
We'll move on to the next committee report, the Head Start Policy Council. Vice President Cobb?
Yes. I had an opportunity to go to the Head Start Policy Council last week, and I just enjoy it a lot. So, the group is mostly comprised of parents of current, parents and grandparents. There are a fair number of grandparents that serve on the council who have children or grandchildren who are currently in our Head Start programs. The group talked about a number of things to kind of have a standing agenda, but a few items that stood out to me and I think are worthy of sharing, they're in the process of applying for two grant opportunities. And they're non-competitive grants, but they just have to kind of go through the process of applying. And one will help to provide additional support related to trauma impacts. They're hoping to be able to hire a point five staff person, but are acknowledging that it's tough to find a half-time FTE, but their hope, the focus is around helping to provide support to families and students who are impacted by trauma. And then the other, which I think is crazy, but federal programs, the other grant that they have to apply for is a two percent COLA. So, going through the process of submitting the paperwork to be able to pass through a two percent COLA. So, they're in the process of doing that too. They talked some, just through, they're a good problem-solving group, so raising issues that are occurring and thinking through ways of solving them. One is related just to engagement generally. With the changes this year in the program duration, a lot of families have been able to work in ways that they hadn't before, parents have been able to. And so, always having a quorum, I think, is a challenge. So, they talk through different strategies and ideas to put in place around making sure that they have the attendance, because I think the group is really feeling some energy about upcoming things like applying for these grants and other opportunities to engage. They're really wanting to have a quorum so they can take action on things. So, they've already sent out like encouraging letters to all members and have some follow-up plans to provide a little bit of stronger nudge to folks who haven't shown. But they also have some pretty clear guidelines and their bylaws around attendance and non-attendance and when you'll not be able to continue your participation on the council. So, they just think problem-solving and thinking through next steps around attendance. And so, I'm hopeful about that. And I didn't, this didn't occur to me as I was sitting there, but, and I might not be as good at helping to build community, but I was like, what about Zoom meetings? Or what about, what are all the ways that you can think through of facilitating the council meetings, different times of the day? They, they took a vote on whether or not to shift and to try out an evening meeting in April. That got voted down. So, there was very little interest in that, just acknowledging that folks have long days and have kids and need to settle down at the end of the night. So, I think they still think they do strategies to address that. Also, there was a presentation from communities and schools around the Ready, Set, Read Program. Again, problem-solving through the participation programs that have multiple preschool programs that are operating within one school. And if the books are with one class and the other program, so just thinking through what are the systems that they need to put into place to facilitate better communication between the different programs that are all operating in the same place and the opportunities available for all of the kids. So, it's just good to hear the conversation, to hear what they're thinking through. And they too are looking forward to continuing the dialogue between the board and the council and more of a regular board presentation. And they acknowledge that they'll be ready to answer more of your fiscal questions.
I thought you did great.
I thought so too.
Yeah. Thank you. And thank you for your leadership in building that connection with the Policy Council through your service on the board. I thought it was outstanding to have that parent Head Start Policy Council Board Member come and speak to us. I, I'm excited that they're interested in continuing to do that.
And one last thing too, as we were talking about family engagement in our last committee of the whole, our last study session, I think that as we talk about bridging that language gap between early learning and how we talk about family engagement in K-12, how we talk about family engagement, as some of these council members are rolling off because their kids are going to kindergarten, they'd probably be great parents to target for being a part of any kind of committee or any kind of organized effort to create more continuity across the two.
Yeah. That would be great. Great suggestion. Okay. That is it for committee reports. Updates and comments. The board expressed an interest a couple of months ago in going out for student listening sessions, had a couple of meetings talking about what would that look like. And lo and behold, we've arrived at the dates where in the next month, we're going to visit ten middle schools and ten high schools between the five of us. And Director Keating, you started things off. Do you want to provide some feedback on your experience at Oakland and the students and anything at a high level? And I'll caveat it by saying, we do anticipate having a more formal, we are in the first few days of this, so we'll have a more formal brief out, but just kind of observations of the experience?
The conversation was really, was really authentic. And I was really impressed with how forthcoming the students were and how they also were really reflective about peers and not in a judgmental way, in a, in a way of trying to seek to understand. And I was excited to start at Oakland, just given the experiences so many of the students have by the time they arrive at Oakland, I thought was really critical in listening to how, how do we support, you know, the idea of how do we support every student every day and policy? And so, I felt like their experiences would give maybe a reflection that students that are in the comprehensive programs or even innovative schools, like, I don't know, they just have some resiliency that I think was really apparent to me in being in conversation with them. And I was in observing Principal Jones, those kids that I watched him interact with, they really trust him. And he's built a genuine connection and relationship with them, and that I thought was really impressive. And clearly, like, there was one student that talked about he didn't want to show up to school before, but at all the other schools that he had attended, but at Oakland, he felt seen, he felt valued, and he wanted to be there. And he said that was the first time in his experience. And I felt that was, that spoke volumes to the experience that is being created at Oakland. So, I'm going to go to Baker on tomorrow morning, and so, I'm really excited about Baker, Gray, and Mount Oklahoma next week.
Thank you for sharing. On Tuesday, I was at Stewart, and I was really impressed, you know, when we talked about how do we get students to be candid, and, and they were candid, and they were respectful of one another. And Ravi and Kim, the counselor and the principal, did an outstanding job of diverse sixth, seventh, and eighth graders, different backgrounds, different ethnicities, different issues. The question set that we are asking at all schools is mostly focused on student safety and how do they feel safe in bullying and, and policy and adults practicing enforcement of those policies and what helps them to feel safe at school, mental health issues. And what was evident to me with all of these kids is that the work that we've done initially at the elementary school level with social, emotional learning is starting to pay dividend. The, the self-awareness and the vocabulary that they have was amazing. Their ability to relate to one another and to not be judgmental and to really speak from the heart and to consider a variety of perspectives, that really is emblematic. So, that, that just is that, that real world kind of anecdotal, you know, we oftentimes, and I'm as guilty as anyone, get lost in, I want to see the, the hard data and stuff. But that sort of qualitative anecdotal in the moment with those kids was very impressive. And I was, I was just in awe of how they were able to articulate themselves. very impressive. And I was, I was just in awe of how they were able to articulate themselves so well. And I will be, next week, I'm at First Creek, Lincoln, and Idea.
Okay. Well, on Tuesday, I was at Willie Stewart Academy, which was a wonderful experience. It's a very unique school in the Tacoma school system. And, and the, and the adults, young adults that are there are incredibly impressive. They, you know, the Willie Stewart Academy is, is actually for, for students who are not on track to, to graduate in, in a timely fashion. They've had a lot of things going on in their lives that have taken their attention away from, you know, the focus on school. And these kids want to be there. They have been, all of them have been started in, in other high schools. And so they've had a variety of experiences. And I was incredibly impressed at the empathy, the maturity. And, and I'll step up to say that I got there a little bit early. And Greg Iganow, is that how you pronounce it? Who's the principal, really knows his stuff, knows what he's doing. He's hired a great team. And the kids, again, have a great deal of respect for the staff at, and a loyalty to Willie Stewart Academy and of course, to Willie Stewart, who comes and spends time with them. And that has been, been fabulous. So got the, the sense of the place. And then there were, the students that came together were a variety from across experiential levels and socioeconomic backgrounds. But they were, they took this, this invitation to heart. And I felt really grateful that they were not only open to sharing very deep personal introspection, but also they listened well to each other. And then at the end, we kind of, I kind of asked them to say, well, you know, think about outside yourself, think about friends or other people, you know, what would you do for them? And the switch in their mind about how to take care of each other and what was important to them was really magical. And so I, I felt like we got a lot out of the basic questions we asked. But also, we learned a lot about how we could be better. And I think we, I don't know how we, you, you were all starting yours, but I started by telling them what we came, you know, what we wanted to, why we were there and what we were hoping to hear. And they actually said at the end, we kind of did this little round robin, and they wanted me to pass on gratitude to the board for A, caring enough to ask them, and B, for even thinking that, you know, that they could be helpful. And they all just really want to step up. So I thought, thought that was really powerful. And was there any, I think there was, we also, oh, and I wanted to do a shout-out to Kyle Moore, who's the social worker. And, and man, he is one gifted guy. He really knows how to talk to kids and get them to, to speak out. And, and of course, it's unusual to have a social worker at school. That's what makes Willie Stewart a little different. But the kids depend on him and, and believe in him. And so thanks to Tacoma Public Schools for making that possible.
Thank you. At my listening session, I had a student who watches, maybe she's watching tonight, who is a regular watcher. So she knew all about what we'd been talking about. She filled, it was awesome. She filled all of her classmates in on why I was there and what we'd been talking about and what we wanted to hear. It was the absolute best segue into the conversation. Vice President Cobb?
That makes me smile.
Yeah, it was pretty good.
I'll give a shout-out first to Mr. Allen at Truman because same sentiment. Everybody loves him. Like, he almost, he was actually, well, what's said in the rectangle stays in the rectangle. But I will say, like, he had a little redness. So like, I think it's great when you can hear back from your students. I'm sure how much they appreciate you. So I'll just start with that. And I'm really curious to see, like, the formal summary of what comes out of the notes and see the themes. But there are definitely some key points that emerged in our conversations. Again, I echo the same kind of sentiment that some of you have around just their care with one another, not judgmental, I mean, giving each other space to speak. They just seem like, level of, they had language to describe feelings and, like, it was clear that these are not issues that they haven't thought about or been exposed to or talked about before. I, I think a couple of things that stood out for me was just the importance that they put on having either a teacher in the building or at least one good friend that you can talk to about whatever is going on with you. And that one person who you know it's going to be between you, it's just an avenue for you to get it all out. And the importance of being able to get it all out, that was a theme that came up in our conversation. Another theme was just being able to take a break and like, having a space to just step back. And they pointed to really appreciating some teachers that noticed that they needed that space on different occasions and gave it to them.
That's cool.
So that was a theme that came up. One other point that resonated with me, and only came from one student, but there was some head nods, so I'm curious if any of those in other conversations was, in talking about opportunities for improvement, like, we hear sometimes that students feel like there's too much homework or not. But this one student spoke about it in the context of just it cutting into family time. And like, family and being able to make that connection back at home was really important to them. And so just thinking through ways of facilitate, like, if you have a sport and you have an activity and you have homework, there's just not a lot of time to touch back, touch base with your people, really. But overall, I just appreciate the opportunity. And the conversation, I started the same way by telling them why we're there, but in the same way that sometimes when we're here, I get self-conscious about us always talking about the problems. I was feeling a little bit like that at the end of the conversation, like wanting them to not leave feeling any, any kind of heaviness. So tried to end too with encouraging them to just focus on all the good. And just appreciating them for letting them know, I appreciated them for talking through something that's a little heavier. But again, to not leave with that during the day.
Yeah, thank you. And thank you, Tanya, for all of the behind-the-scenes work, coordinating the note-taking.
Kudos.
And the refreshments. And it all went great. And we're just barely into this. I think it's going to pay dividends. And I know I've already had conversations with my colleagues about how do we have this as a regular part of our engagement so that we make decisions that are based on what we hear from students? So I think we're on the verge of something pretty cool. Director Bombright?
Can I add one other thing that I did since the last board meeting that I wanted to talk about briefly was a site visit to Wainwright with my friend Tony Pace. Take our show on the road. But actually, that was also pretty exciting because it's another unique school. It's an intermediate school. It's fourth grade to eighth grade. And so the setup is very open there. And I just wanted to, to thank the people at, at Wainwright for having us come and for the kids who were, I think too, a person were so polite. It was so interesting. They'd come up and they'd say, how do you do? And shake their hands. Wow. Anyway, but they, they were all very enthusiastic about their new building and that they've been in for a couple of years now. But, and we were, anyway, I just wanted to say that my visit to Wainwright was, was fabulous. And I, I think that we're, you know, we're on a roll. I think the, the kids and the staff are really motivated to move in the right direction. And anyway, so I want to make sure.
Ready. Director Keating?
I just have one quick thing to add. So the day after the last board meeting, our business meeting, I had met with, the morning after I met with Councilmember Beals at, oh my gosh, this was just when we were, no, we were at Gray first, but then we were at elementary school on the south side. I could drive to it right now. It's on South Alder, off of South 56th. And the name just escaped me. But we were there with also a traffic engineer as well. And I actually knew the para from somewhere else. It was really fun to see her. And like, there's no sidewalk on the opposite side. It's just gravel. So I, we watched some, and having been someone that's done valet and tried to encourage positive safe driving by adults in a school area, it's challenging. But we watched some really dangerous behavior happening. And staff were putting themselves at risk to cross the street to walk kids across. We watched a, a parent drive around a stopped school bus with the sign out. And if you stand before and wa, and that's just the morning drop-off. And I think, and I, and I've shared some of this online. And, and I know that this is happening, like, at every single school. I know I've had conversations with Superintendent Santorino over the years about driver behavior and just behaving like you would want our children to behave. And there's something about being behind the wheel and having to slow down that is really troubling to me, just watching so far, just my own experiences as a parent. But I've gotten a lot of feedback from community member or from families about how unsafe they feel just trying to get to the school building. And it's not because the school's unsafe, it's because of the behavior of the adults around. And so I'm really curious, as I continue this, to figure out how can we communicate to the community to say, no, this is a serious safety issue? And try to avoid not having a serious issue, an injury happen? So for those of you that are driving your children, I guess I would just implore you to slow down for a few seconds because it can really, there's a real serious impact. And I would love to just hear more feedback of how, how these issues are improved upon. But it is a serious issue at, I would say, probably majority of our schools. And trying to figure out, getting buy-in from the community to say, hey, let's drive a little bit better. Maybe follow the traffic laws for starters. That'd be nice.
And what we hear from the bus drivers and from the principals at schools is it's one of those things that ebbs and flows. So you do a big campaign, say, this is where we're going, this is the way you drive it, this is what you look like. And parents do it. And then a month down the, you know, about a month or two down the road, they've forgotten or they're in a hurry. So, you know, part of what we need to do is, you know, figure out how can we make this wave campaign so that, you know, it comes back over and over? Because, I mean, I saw it as an elementary principal, you know, you thought you had it solved and here it comes again. So, yeah, it'd be great to talk about it.
Ready? Thank you. I would add a couple of things. I know athletically, we had a young man from stadium win a state championship at the swim and dive competition last weekend. So hopefully we'll have an opportunity to congratulate him at an upcoming board meeting. State basketball is underway. We have three of the boys' teams that have made it to the Sweet Sixteen. Wilson, Lincoln, who seem like perennial Sweet Sixteen teams, but Mount Tahoma this year has had an unbelievable run. So it's been fun to watch them. The Wilson boys last weekend won the district championship, as did the Lincoln girls who are in the Sweet Sixteen, and the Wilson girls are in the Sweet Sixteen. So we're going to be well-represented with hoops this upcoming weekend. The other thing, well, I would draw attention to, there's a long list of announcement of future board meetings. You're going to see all of the work that the board's going to be out busy doing in the community. And then at the end, you'll see the school board business meeting. So the next time we come back to formally meet as a group is March 12th. And I know, especially in the last couple of days, that there has been concern expressed about the coronavirus and what's it mean to students and schools. And Bothell made a decision to close schools for a cleaning. I just want to confirm that the way we've addressed this in the past is always working with the Tacoma Pierce County Health Department to take guidance, that we're not making public health decisions on our own, that we're implementing the guidance of professionals?
We have a, we have an EMT, EMT is that what it's called? Tomorrow. And so we are coming together. And, you know, we've gotten lots of guidance from the state. We just got guidance from OSPI. So we will follow that guidance and make sure that we're in compliance with it and continue to work to make sure that, you know, we're ready on several different fronts. I was talking to Rosalyn today and we were talking about financial readiness. You know, what if you do, if school closes and we don't, you know, we, we don't get checks for, you know, three months, all of those things that, that happen. So while everything is not resolved, we're definitely working on it.
It's a little bit different than snow closures, right? Where that's a local decision. So yes, we work hand-in-hand with the Pierce County Health Department and follow their guidance when those, whether there's a closure or there's a cleanup or anything on there.
Yeah. And I would, I'll channel my, as a recovering emergency manager, just wash your hands with hot water and soap for 20 seconds, not the 4.2 seconds that most of us allot to it. If you don't feel well, stay home. Don't go expose people at work or, or in the school if you have a kid that's not feeling well. I know I had two kids last Friday that came home sick. And we said, absolutely, we don't want to expose people if you have any sort of flu or cold. But we, as a district, will disseminate through our normal channels, right? Through social media, through email, through phone calls. And know that it's going to be the very best guidance to keep everybody safe. And it's going to come directly from the Pierce County Health Department. Anything else for the good of the order? Vice President Cobb?
Just one item on the announcement of future board meetings, just a correction that Mason is Director Cobb and not Director Keating. That's it.
Oh, sure. Okay. So don't try to show up at that one.
She didn't say it in her list, so I mean, she didn't.
All right. Anything else for the good of the order? We are adjourned.